Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 12, 2025. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Here.
Vice Chair Priggett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Chair Stephenson?
Here.
And Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge Allegiance, and Commissioner Andrews will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you want to announce it, or do you need me to?
Yeah, I can announce it, for sure. I'm not sure if we need like an agenda item for like a formal reservation process at the end, but I did want to let anybody who has not yet heard know that I was unanimously, the resolution unanimously passed to have me on as the newest member of City Council. So I am privileged to serve on the council now in that capacity, and I'm looking forward very much to working with you guys in that new capacity. And, you know, whatever that may bring, I will do my best to continue to serve the city how I have here. And I appreciate everything that I've gained from working alongside you guys and serving alongside you guys. You're a bunch of passionate and dedicated individuals. And I know the city's going to continue to be in good hands while those people like you are serving. So I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, so this will be your last official meeting?
Yes.
And so as far as tonight goes, the only thing that I would request is that you abstain from voting, because this will be a Type 4 hearing that will go to council, and then you will be able to vote on it at that time.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
He'll be swearing in no time.
What's that?
I said he'll be swearing in no time.
Yeah, he will be swearing in no time. All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Anyone online wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone. Morning chambers. Okay. With that, moving right into 7518, correct? Correct. Okay. All right, for the record, we'll be going through the procedure here. And before we begin the hearing for tonight's agenda item, I'd like to explain a little about the Planning Commission, the procedure we will be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission has appointed seven member volunteer body Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the City Council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes the final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the City Council who renders the final decision. Quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conferentative Plan, Development Code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. Tonight's application is case file 7518, and the applicant is FEMA. Staff will be presenting. And this is a Type 4 hearing, and the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the City Council, who will be making the final decision for the text amendments. And with that, with it being a Type 4 hearing, we don't have any expedite communication. Is there any conflict of interest that anyone would like to declare at this time? Nope. Okay. Then with that, we will proceed and open the public hearing for case file 7518, FEMA. It's a Development Code update.
All righty. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Hold up here. Excuse me, patient. All righty. My name is Dakota Meyer. I'm the Associate Planner here at the City of Troutdale. I'll be presenting the staff report for the proposed text amendment, the Chapter 14 of the Troutdale Development Code, under case file number 75-18. There's one primary request with this application. The request is we're proposing to update the update section number 14, 14.035.D submission requirements to add habitat assessment reports to the for-all-floodplain-development permits. This changes in response to the FEMA requirement for communities to select pre-implementation compliance measures, otherwise known as PICMS. Here's an overview of the proposed amendments. It will be within Chapter 14, which is flood management, specifically Section 14.035 floodplain development permit subsection D, which is submittal requirements. And we will be adding floodplain, flood habitat assessment report as a submittal requirement for all floodplain development permits. I wanted to give a little bit of background of how we got to this point. So in April 2016, the National Marine Fisheries Service issued a biological opinion that concludes that national flood, the National Flood Insurance Program in Oregon could jeopardize the survival of several threatened marine species. In October 2021, FEMA issued a draft implementation plan to reduce the negative impacts, the NIF, NIFIP, of the NIFIP on threatened species. In 2023, several environmental groups filed a lawsuit stating that FEMA had been too slow to implement the buyout measures. And then in July 2024, FEMA announced a new program of pre-implementation compliance measures, PICMS, for the buyout. FEMA notified Oregon National Flood Insurance Plan communities of the requirement to adopt a mandatory PICM in order to remain part of the program. The pre-implementation compliance measures, the PICMS that the city was, had to select from, are either, one, to prohibit all development in the special flood hazard area; two, adopt the 2024 model ordinance that requires mitigation of any floodplain development to a no net loss standard; or three, require a special habitat assessment and mitigation plan for development on a permit-by-permit basis in the special flood hazard area to achieve a no net loss standard. The city staff, city staff attended several webinars that were hosted by FEMA between the months of July 2024 to November 2024. FEMA set the deadline as of December 1st, 2024, to pick a PICM. Otherwise, you would automatically revert to the permit-by-permit basis. After attending all those meetings, city staff determined that option three, the permit-by-permit basis, was the best path forward for the city. Here is a, just a quick grab of what is being added to subsection 14.035.D. This is stating that we'll add flood habitat assessment report under submittal requirements for floodplain development permits to ensure all development, that the 100-year floodplain will comply with the 2016 National Marine Fisheries Service biological opinion of no net loss. These are the proposed findings that staff has gone through. The proposed, the findings are: The proposed change to the Development Code does not conflict with the applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change, and the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Staff finds that all of the criteria are met. At tonight's meeting, staff offers the following recommendation for the conduct of the February 12, 2025, public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the Troutdale Development Code. Recommend approval to the proposed text amendments to the City Council for its consideration at two public hearings. The City Council public hearings are scheduled for Tuesday, March 11, 2025, and then Tuesday, April 8, 2025. The earliest effective date will be May 8, 2025. If the matter is continued, the schedule above will be affected. That is the end of my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff before we take a comment? No?
One question, I guess. There has been some comments on, you know, the future of FEMA's reach, I guess, when it comes to a lot of different things. So I guess, how quickly would we anticipate being able to make changes again when it, if it comes to hypothetically, the removal of such a requirement?
If that were the case, then we would start right away.
Okay.
And, you know, change this, basically revert it back.
Same process?
Yeah, we'd have to go through the same process. Since it is a code amendment, we have to notify the state. But if something like that were FEMA does, is dissolved, then we would also have to figure out what, if this is still something that needs to be done, we would have to find out more information of what's the, what needs to be done from a top-down standard. And then from there, we would immediately start the ball rolling. If it's no longer required, then we will move forward with the code change to revert it back, to remove this.
Did you have a direct question for staff, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, on page two of the staff report, I guess, the section that starts, "Communities were required to select one of three pathways." Is that, are those three points, direct text from somebody other than staff, or was that written by staff?
It was, the context was taken from a DLCD notice that was given to staff. It's not directly pulled from that, but it's pretty close.
Okay, my question is, well, first, I don't think we were ever presented with the 2014 model. We didn't see that, did we?
No, they're still working on a clean model. They submitted a model, a model ordinance to all communities that they were still working on. And after reviewing that model, staff determined that actually our VECO code and our floodplain code is more restrictive than a lot, so we wouldn't change too much. And this whole thing, the PICM system, sunsets within, in the next five years. So rather than adopting a whole model ordinance and drastically changing our code, we figured that the easiest change, since we already do have a permit-by-permit basis, which is our floodplain development permits, because we do require that, most, most cities don't require floodplain development permits or don't have a program for that, that we figured this would be the easiest change, is to just require an additional submittal requirement, rather than drastically change the code with a model ordinance that, in my opinion and other staff opinion, is not fair and objective.
Okay, so what I'm getting at eventually is, I'm seeing some language differences between number two and number three. Number two says, "requires mitigation." Number three says, "mitigation plan." So, you know, those, those aren't the same thing.
So it is, the difference is that...
If you could maybe just kind of elaborate a little bit on what the difference is between the full mitigation plan and...
Yeah, so mitigation is, the mitigate, all of these require mitigation. So that's, that's the standard, is that it has to be at a no net loss standard. The, for number two, the, for the mitigation is, it has, you know, it has to be done, it has to be done right then. The mitigation plan is they need to submit that with their permit, so that we can review it and make sure it meets the standards for no net loss, and that also meets our mitigation standards as well. So we have very strict mitigation standards as a city, within our city code. So they need to submit a mitigation plan of how they're going to prior to the development occurring. That's kind of the difference between the two. And you don't have to submit a plan, you just have to mitigate to a no net loss standard in the second one. And in my opinion, that's not clear and objective, where seeing a plan, part of the habitat assessment report, that then we can see that, we can look at it, make sure it meets our standards, meets the no net loss standards, and then either approve it or send it back for revision.
Okay, so, so the city would be responsible to enforce that the mitigation was actually performed?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mid-process. And we do, like, for example, on our VECO section, our VECO standards for vegetation corridor, we do already have a plan that's very similar to that, like, for example, to make sure mitigation is occurring. So it's not exactly the same as that, but it's along the same lines, that the city is, has to make sure that, it's on the applicant to do the mitigation, but it's up to the city to make sure that they are, they follow through with the plan.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay. All right. This time, is there anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to testify this evening? Okay, motion to close?
I move that we close the public hearing.
So, Zach, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. All right. I think we talked about this before, this, right, doesn't allow for off-site, correct?
I don't believe so. I believe it needs to be on-site.
Okay.
I think that was the concern, I think.
Yeah, that's disappointing. Well, north of disappointing, but I'll go with disappointing for now. And then, so I'm clear, my other question, they're going to have an expert submit a plan, right? And then we're going to have someone on staff or consultant? Yeah, correct. Verify that that meets standard, and away we go. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware that that will be changed, but it just doesn't seem crucial to me.
What's that?
Oh, that it has to be on the particular side of the development instead of in the area, right? I mean, if you look at it from a purely scientific or engineering standpoint, which is where it's been most of my life, it just doesn't make sense. But I don't think we can change it, so it is what it is.
Right. I, I would just think that, I don't know, just me, if you got a 500 or 600-page document, you might have a little bit of flexibility in there somewhere. But I guess not, I don't know. Because I think it's everybody's job in government, from ours to the City Council to Metro, to the state, to FEMA, to all do what's best for the community. And I just don't know that quite meets the standard, but it's what we have in front of us. And I think the downside with what it would do for us for flood insurance, for our people would be kind of catastrophic in a way, or could be. Wouldn't that be true?
Well, yeah.
Because they wouldn't be eligible.
Correct, if we didn't sign pick a PICM.
Yeah.
And that, because of 1996, I think that's why all this is coming about. But I agree, mitigating it in the area but not specific site is going to be really hard for the developer, and it makes it more cumbersome. And we're supposed to be making it easy for development, and I know we need it. They, you know, flood insurance is needed, and so it just makes it hard for us to make that decision for everyone, but we have to.
From just a pure scientific standpoint, it would have made more sense overall.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I think staff has done an outstanding job with this, you know, from figuring out the best way forward to biting your tongue, to, you know, whatever needed to be done to accomplish what we have.
We give you the impossible, would you follow with it?
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on this, which is?
Chair Stephenson?
Commissioner Wilcox, please.
On the actual text amendments, I have a bit of a problem with the last sentence. It says, "all mitigation recommendations." Recommendations doesn't seem like it's quite mandatory enough.
Well, they would come through as a recommendation, right, and they would have to be adopted into the finding. Would that be accurate?
What, Commissioner Wilcox, what page are you on of the staff report?
Um...
14?
Well, it says 14-15 at the bottom.
Yeah. The last sentence of the red text?
Yeah, it's the underlying red text.
Thank you.
So, yeah, basically what you had mentioned, Chair, is that with, like, they, they come up with a plan to mitigate, and so this is what they're recommending in their plan to mitigate, and that's what, they don't know exactly, and like, hey, that either is good, or no, you need to go further in this area, you need to go further in this area. And that's why it stays, it needs to be as a condition of approval. So they may recommend X, Y, and Z, and then really, hey, X is good, but you also need to do B, C, and D as a condition of approval.
And it also comes from staff as a recommendation until it's...
It's, the recommendation itself is from the certified...
Natural Resources Council.
Natural, yeah.
On their side.
On their side. That creates the, the report and the plan.
But I mean, even when you get done with it, it's still in the form of a recommendation until...
Until it's a, yeah, until it's a condition of approval, yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, you guys are too easy. All right. Motion? No?
I know. Bite my tongue.
This is Shirley Priggett. I would move that we... Can I say this? Recommend to the City Council? Is that coming on?
Yeah.
Okay, recommend to the City Council. Case file number 75-18, FEMA has amended.
Do we can say I recommend it?
Yeah.
We're recommending approval to the council.
Approval, that's what I meant, sorry.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve case file 7518 FEMA with a recommendation to the City Council as presented. Further protest. And is there any question on the motion? Hearing none. Call for vote, please.
All righty. Just want to clarify, I would still call Commissioner Andrews, and he would just abstain for...
Yes. Okay.
Commissioner Andrews?
Abstain.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Vice Chair Priggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. It's you.
Yes, I don't have any updates this evening, but we did get out the RFQ last week for the confluence sites. So that RFQ will be online for two months, and we'll, we'll go from there.
It's exciting.
It is, it is exciting.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
All right. I did have one thing. At last night's City Council meeting, we brought forth case file 7517, which was recommended to council by Planning Commission with some amendments. And so I just wanted to kind of go over, I just wanted to show you what was, how it was written in the code. This is a request from council, so I want to make sure you all are aware of what was amended. First and foremost is the findings were amended with the edits submitted by Commissioner Wilcox to the findings. So those were amended. And then per our discussion, I'll just show you the, now the new red line, I'll share my screen here, to add further clarification to additional requirements within Chapter 3 for the commercial zoning districts. So I'll share my screen, and I'll just show you what we added. I know some or most of you already are aware of this, but I wanted to make sure I brought it forward as well. So everybody is in the know. So this is what was added after the Planning Commission meeting that was in front of council last night. So the red was added per our discussion on the January 8 public hearing. So we added, "For the purposes of this chapter, a public or private school includes a community college or other institution where..." where students under the age of eighteen receive instruction to receive academic credits that apply towards elementary, middle, or high school grades K through twelve and which may also apply towards college advancement credits. So I just wanted to let you all know that was also added. It's a mouthful, but I made sure I, I watched the video several times to make sure I got it correct for what was, what we wanted in there, so.
Can I have little kids? Okay, great. And that was the only change?
That, and then just the, the, the edits, that's the only thing that went into the actual text amendment? The findings had, uh, the edits from, that Commissioner Wilcox had submitted. Um, just changing some of the wording to, since there was a lot of double negatives in there, trying to clean up that, so.
Okay, do you have that as well?
Yes. I will first I will first just pull up uh, the edits submitted by Commissioner Wilcox in red line form, and then I'll show how they were submitted to, how they were added to the staff report. Okay. So these are the edits, uh, that were submitted, uh, and we discussed also at the January eighth public hearing. So minor edits, but edits that, that create clarity and remove some of the double negatives, um, to make sure that it was a clear and objective finding. So we added these, all of these red line edits. Uh, I took them directly from Commissioner Wilcox and added them into the staff report, uh, for city council. And if you'd like, I can share the staff report for city council as well.
I believe these are the edits that we approved on January eighth?
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Great.
So I just wanted to bring that forward so everybody was aware and could see the changes that were made for the city council hearing last night.
Your turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there last night, there, there wasn't a, um, for, for city council, there wasn't a, a cracked egg in the carton. And, uh, I, I felt, I was very happy to see so many good candidates. And, um, I was surprised, happily so, that you you got the nomination, and, uh, so you did well.
Thank you.
And, uh, but we are gonna be sad to lose Commissioner, and appreciate it.
You don't get to go, you, they get to go first, okay. Commissioner Minkoff?
I just think it's a tremendous task to go through this extensive, lengthy document, and, uh, so thank you very much, staff. Thanks, Paul, for your, uh, wisdom and, and, uh, good grammarly edits. And, um, thank you, Tanny, for your, um, your, your good direction. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, yeah, I actually wanted to back up to what, um, came before council last night. Because I did have some edits on the staff report and the ordinance itself. Is it too late to correct those, or how, how would that work?
No, no, those edits will be, uh, did you, can I ask, did you send those over to our city recorder?
Not, not, not in, nothing in addition to what I had sent you.
Okay, yeah, that, then, yeah, though, it's not too late, those will be added for, uh, to the staff report. Uh, and those edit, those, uh, spelling errors and things will be changed for the next staff report, uh, moving forward to council.
Okay, well, I, I, I didn't, well, some of them were typos, like spelling and, and numbers messed up. But a couple of them actually needed to be reworded. So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't suggest some reword, rewording at this point. Like, for example, um, in the ordinance itself, you're seeing, the changes bring the code into conformance with measure twenty-six-two forty-eight. You know, so that, that's, that's making the same kind of reverse logic as, as the problems we had in the findings of fact. You know, if you're conforming to, if you're conforming to the measure, you're continuing to prohibit additional marijuana retailers.
Yep, and so that will be edited, um, to say, uh, I'll just read the last portion of it. Uh, brings trout development code into compliance with the electorate voting no on measure two-six dash two-four-eight on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, that, that sounds a lot better.
Compliance or consistent?
Okay.
Conformance, into conformance.
Okay.
Yeah. With, with what the electorate?
Okay.
But then voting no on the measure. So that edit has been also, uh, added to the ordinance as well. Um, and then I believe, I was watching the video today, when I got back from my appointment, and I wanted to make sure I was catching all of those, uh, everything that you had mentioned last night, Commissioner Wilcox. Um, so I, let me, I made some edits already this afternoon. So that's the edit that will be made to the ordinance itself. Um, and then, uh, other than the, uh, scripture spelling errors, I believe there was, was the other one in the pros and cons section?
Uh, there was one in the, uh, actual staff report on page two where it says, into alignment with twenty-six-two forty-eight.
Yes, yeah, and that one will say, uh, along the same, uh, into alignment with the electorate voting no on measure, uh, twenty-six dash two-four-eight.
Okay, that, that also sounds a lot better. Okay, thanks.
Yep. I make sure to watch the video, and I didn't have time to write those down last night, but I went back and watched the video today to make sure those edits were, uh, consistent.
Okay, and they, they, those are in the email that I sent you originally?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilcox. Commissioner Prickett?
I want to thank staff. You guys worked hard and it's easy to read and understand, so I appreciate it. And Zach, congratulations. I look forward to seeing you on the city council. We'll miss you dearly, but we know you'll do good up there, so. Thank you. And Tanny, for your leadership.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, big thank you to you guys, um, staff, for, um, really always also having the mindset of putting the community first and what's gonna be minimally impactful to how we do things. Um, I know it also makes your jobs easier, which is great, but the fact that it does make your jobs easier and coincides with what's best for the community speaks, I think, volumes to how you guys operate, so. Um, your hair looks great, by the way, so. But yeah, I really appreciate you guys, um, and I appreciate all of you on planning commission, I know I said at the beginning, but, um, the work that you guys do here is invaluable. Um, the things that I've been a part of have been, uh, not only a great learning experience, but, um, I think just, uh, really eye-opening to, um, really how things get done in this town and, um, insight into the people behind it. So, uh, it's something that I'll keep in mind going forward, um, it's definitely something that I'm gonna keep posted on. I think, um, whether I, I'm able to tune in or at least watch after the fact and read the minutes, I think it's important to get a lot of the context of what goes on in here, um, because I think there is sometimes a, a, a loss, uh, in translation there when it comes to reaching council and the thinking behind it. So, um, it's something that I'm hoping to bridge, uh, you know, more, uh, more programmably, I guess, on, on council and, you know, there were, you know, and some of the other, uh, commissioners and things brought up some points last night, too, um, that have kind of stuck in my mind, and, um, I will say, I guess, I just, you know, these are your elected officials that made the decision last night, and it's people that we trust to make decisions for the city. Um, it is something that I don't take lightly, and it is something that I will, uh, be shooting for as far as earning, you know, reelection in, in two years, if, if that's where, where things go. Um, and if that's what I feel called to do, I mean, it's something that I, I'm always of the belief that actions speak louder than words. I'm not one for the spotlight, I am one for results. So, um, that's why I've enjoyed my time here so much, and I think, um, you know, ideally accomplishing things on council of, of value and, and, uh, work for this community is going to ultimately be what I'm after. So, um, I appreciate you guys and I appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, um, it has been a pleasure working with you, getting to know you, and, um, you've got a heart for the city, and you're, you're dedicated, and, um, really appreciate all that you've brought to this body, and I appreciate all that you're gonna bring to the city council. Um, I think you'll do great.
Me too.
And then, um, also just a couple of other things. Um, this now brings us to five. Okay, and I've had a discussion with the city attorney and the city recorder at this point as far as, um, what they're trying to determine is what, quorum? And just to let you know, if, if a quorum is three, because if a quorum is the number of seats that are filled, okay, then a quorum would be three, and I think we would be able to function that way pretty, pretty easily or somewhat, somewhat easily until July. And if a quorum remained at four, um, that would be much more difficult for us. So when we get an answer on that, then we'll kind of know what we need to do as a commission as far as, um, you know, whether we have to get a replacement, you know, have one come running through a wall or whatever happens, you know, right away, or whether we can wait for the full recruitment. So that's kind of where we're at now. We can definitely function, it's just gonna be a little bit more challenging for us to do so. But we'll pass that information along when we have it. And the other thing, and this isn't necessarily a planning issue, but I just want to bring this to everyone's attention. We have a lot of significant things going on with the city right now as far as emergency services and budgetary and things. Um, might not know it, but we had a ten-year contract with Russian Fire and a ten-year contract with Multnomah County sheriffs that started in two thousand and fifteen, and they end this year. And so there's going to be some significant cost increases to these that I can tell you are gonna impact each and every one of us, um, going forward. And it's a time that we really have to look at the services that we're getting and what are we getting that we need? Is there something that we're not getting, you know, that we do need? And something we're getting that we don't necessarily need? How that all fits together? And these are really, really important decisions that are gonna be made between now and, um, June. And so, uh, I encourage you to tune in to the Public Safety Working Group meetings and, um, the Budget Committee meetings that'll be coming up. And those can all be found on the city's website, and please let your voice be heard because it's kind of an important time for us. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone, thank you.